...the seventh Barbara City Council meeting of February 6, 2007 to order. Will you please stand to say the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you please call the roll?
Councilmember, agency member Barnwell?
Here.
Falcone?
Here.
Horton?
Here.
House?
Here.
Schneider?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Mayor Chair Bloom?
Here.
Item number one, employee recognition service award pins.
We've got so many firefighters that joined you at the same time, isn't that interesting? I love it. So maybe when I get done, you can just stand there and we'll get a group picture, too. I think it's wonderful. So here's your pin, and here's the scuttlebutt on you. Oh darn!
Read every word, please.
Pat McElroy began his career with the city of Santa Barbara when he was hired as a firefighter on September 8, 1981. This is Pat's calling, and his enthusiasm is contagious. He holds the distinction of being the first firefighter to be promoted to the position of captain, which he achieved on December 15, 1990. Pat was voted firefighter of the year in 1987 and again in 1995. He was a long, he is a longtime Firefighters Association Board Member and Chairman of the Firefighters for Better Government. Pat's significant career incidents include spending 30 days in Mississippi in the aftermath of Hurricane Katrina, three major fires on Sterns Wharf, the Santa Barbara Bank and Trust fire, the Painted Cave Fire, the Laconcheeta landslide, the 1995 downtown floods, the Northridge earthquake, Los Angeles civil disturbances, and several assignments to various wildfires as far away as Montana. In 2004, Pat received an exemplary action report when assigned to the Cerito fire in Southern California for his prompt decisions that resulted in saving crews and residents' lives. Pat is very proud of his widespread community involvement, including fundraising on behalf of the victims of 9/11 and Hurricane Katrina, and coaching for several youth sports teams. He's received awards of recognition from the Easter Seal Society, the Special Olympics, Marymount School, and many other organizations. Married for 19 years, Pat and his wife Bonnie Kirwin have three children, Darcy, Brendan, and Duffy. Pat, it's a pleasure to honor you for your 25 years of service to the city. On behalf of the city council and your fellow citizens, thank you and congratulations.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I also want to thank Joan Kent and Chiefs Vaughn and Prince for making room for me today. Being part of this fire department has enriched my life. One of the great things about this career is our ability to respond instantly for people's calls for help. That's a big thing for us type A personalities. That instant reinforcement from the public is incredibly rewarding. But to be able to do it in a town that I love with people that I love is really icing on the cake. I can't believe that it has been 25 years, but the mirror doesn't lie. And what I'm taking from these years are the incredible people that I've had the pleasure of working alongside both then and now. And how I remember them is not how they are listed in any personnel roster. The Old Man, Dupan Jan, the Caveman Chemist, Dickie, Alan C. Loud, Grapefruit Head, Captain Cadaver, BB Head, Buffalo Head, Bonsa, the Ayatollah Kohane, Bad Henry, Blinkie, Spanky, Senior Bob, Bubba, Whitebread, and of course, Stand the Man Unusual. There's a million more like that, but it gives you an idea of how it's been a pretty colorful career, pretty loud, and occasionally pretty profane, but all in all, a lot more laughter than tears. Lastly, I want to thank a couple people who weren't here 25 years ago but are here today, and that's my son Brendan and my daughter Darcy. And my son Duffy couldn't get out of school today, or actually didn't want to miss school today, so I don't know where that comes from. More than anyone else, I want to thank my wife Bonnie, who has always been there, and none of this would have meant as much to me without her to share it with. Thanks again.
Well, let me read the names, just random order, really. It's not about putting them in alphabetical order, but it didn't make much sense. Dean Silves, Silves? Dean. Dean Silves began his career as a firefighter with Santa Barbara Fire Department when he was hired on February 8, 1982, after first gaining experience with the Los Angeles County Fire Department as a crew member on a wildfire crew. In his two and a half decades, wow, that makes it sound really long. 25 years is one thing, but two and a half decades with the city's fire department, Dean has worked at several posts with great success. On October 25, 1986, he was promoted to fire engineer, and since August 2, 1997, after another promotion, Dean has held the title of fire captain. Captain Silves recently has, has recently, a variety of, has received, that's why, sorry. Captain Silves has received a variety of honors in his long career. In November 2003, Dean was honored by the Host Lions Club as firefighter of the year for the monumental task of revising and converting the department's standard operating procedures to an electronic format. In 2001, he was commended twice for emergency building and trench shoring training, and for rapid intervention crew training. In 1994, he received a commendation from the County Board of Supervisors, an acknowledgement and recognition of heroic efforts performed during the line of duty which saved a life. In addition to these accolades, Dean helped to coordinate the department's first engineer academy. Dean has always played an active role in training activities for the department and has been commended for his leadership numerous times. In 1992, he was awarded Training Officer of the Year by the Tri-County Training Officers' Association. Dean pursued his interest in training and assumed the duties of training captain on January 10, 2004. Since then, Dean has been instrumental in training the department, including developing a new safety policy for vehicle blocking during highway incidents and coordinating the last three recruit academies. In his personal life, Dean has been married to his wife Cindy for almost as long as he's worked for the city. That did work out nicely, yes. Together, they have two daughters, Laura and Jennifer. Dean, it's a pleasure to honor you today for your 25 years of service with the city and with the fire department. On behalf of the city council and your fellow officers, we thank you and congratulations.
Thank you. Could I give you a quick? Thank you. As I was thinking about a quarter of a century, two and a half decades, it all sounds so unbelievable, but it's gone by so fast. And I think that happens when you do something that you love, and that's been the case with this career. But as I think, I thought about my career, one word just kept coming back over and over, and that is thankful. I'm just, I'm thankful to my Lord and Savior Jesus Christ for his protection and provision over these 25 years. I'm thankful for my family, who have supported me and put up with me for these last 25 years, my beautiful wife Cindy and Laura, who are sitting back there, my youngest daughter Jennifer couldn't be here, she was in school, too. I'm thankful to my parents, who, when I was thinking about a career choice, said, "You know, Dean, you ought to look into the fire service." Well, wiser counsel was never given, I think. I'm thankful to the people on the oral boards 25 years ago that decided to give a, give a 21-year-old kid from Quartz Hill a chance. I hope that in some small way I've shown that their decision was a prudent one. And lastly, as Pat alluded to, I'm thankful to have the opportunity to have worked with the fine people, both past and present, the men and women of this fine department. And I'm sure you guys realize this, but I just want to reinforce it, we have a great fire department. I've done training throughout the state, and it really is about the best you'll ever see. We have great equipment, we have great facilities, but the thing that makes it the greatest are the people that serve this community, the men and women of this department, whose dedication and professionalism makes this department what it really is. And it has been my privilege to serve with them for these 25 years, and I look forward to the remaining years that I have with them. Thank you.
These stories are amazing, one after the other. Christopher Blair began his career as a firefighter in the U.S. Air Force in 1977. He served until 1981, when he was honorably discharged from his final assignment at Vanderberg Air Force Base at the rank of Assistant Chief of Civil Engineering Squadron. He received a Bachelor of Science degree in fire administration from Cogswell Polytechnic College in 1988. He was hired on February 8, 1982, by the city of Santa Barbara Fire Department. Three years later, he was promoted to engineer, and two more promotions followed. He was promoted to captain in 1990 and to battalion chief in 2001. Chris has worked in several positions within the fire department in the past 25 years. He served as a member of the hazardous materials response team, worked at the airport fire station, which deals mainly with aircraft emergencies, has been a member of the department training committee for many years, and he has functioned as an instructor for several of the recruit academies, and currently manages the emergency medical program. In 1999, Chris received honors at the annual EMS conference for lifesaving resuscitation of a cardiac arrest victim. Chris has been sent to many minor, I'm sorry, many major, it's like I'm doing an opposite here, probably a lot of minor ones, too. But the major mutual aid incidents include the L.A. riots, Bouquet Canyon Fire, Norfolk Fire, Tiller Complex in Oregon, Malibu Fire, Encino Canyon Fire, West Fire, Topanga Fire, Bell Canyon, and most recently in 2006, he was sent to teepee fire in Nevada, the 160,000-acre fire north of Casseick, and the Shell Kell, Shekel, S-H-E-K-E-L-L, fire in Moore Park. I understand Moore Park better. Chris enjoys a very active personal life. He plays a competitive adult soccer league, he has competed in several firefighters' Olympics, and has been a participant in the high-rise building competition hosted by the L.A. City Fire Department. He's an all-round physical fitness nut. That's what it says here. Chris and his wife Kim have been married for six years, have two children, son Joseph and daughter Jade. It's a pleasure to honor you today for your 25 years of service on behalf of the city council and your other firefighters. Congratulations, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
As both Dean and Pat mentioned, the people are what makes the department great. I've been blessed with going on various assignments, but it's always for the protection in the back of my mind of Stephen Joseph Masto, who we lost in 1999. And it had an impact on me that I'll have the rest of my life. I was blessed with meeting my wife and having two beautiful children, who are both in preschool today, otherwise they'd be running around here. And there was also in 1982, when we were hired on, Steve Gonzalez, who is off-the-job-retired injury, who I'd like to mention as well. Once again, I give kudos to Chief Vaughn, who has demonstrated to me the right way to do things as a chief officer, and all the members of the council, and former mayors that have set up our department, the capital improvement programs with both the structure, the infrastructure of water mains and CAD systems, and all the workings behind the scenes that you never hear about until you need a fire station relocated, or you need a new fire station. Once again, I thank all of you, and I'm more than honored to serve in a department, and there's no other job I'd rather do, and I'm truly blessed. Thank you.
I'm sure you all knew each other back then, too. It's really interesting, all of you at one time. It's very wonderful. Paul Teschner. Paul was hired as a firefighter by the city of Santa Barbara on February 8, 1982. His previous experience has been with the U.S. Forest Service and the Pismo Beach Fire Department. Over the past 25 years, he has had a chance to work on all three shifts at stations one, four, and three, and currently is assigned to the airport station eight. Captain Teschner has been involved in many areas within the fire department. He's been active in the department's Training and Safety Committee, serving as a recruit instructor and assisting with personal physical agility exams. At his current assignment, Paul has developed a new airport emergency training procedure and has assisted greatly with research and development for new response vehicles. For these efforts, he was presented with the 2004 Host Lions Club's Firefighter of the Year Award. Paul's a recipient of multiple commendations from the public for his actions during life-threatening medical emergencies. In 2001, he served as team leader of the South Coast Interagency Hazmat Team. And his brush with celebrity came when he was the incident commander at the time Oprah Winfrey's jet made an emergency landing with a cracked windshield. So thank you for allowing her to land safely, that was good. Known informally as the poet laureate of the fire department, Paul, Paul and his rhymes have been the highlight of many firefighter gatherings. He's a 20-year member of the Santa Maria Elks Lodge and is active in fundraising events that have benefited his community. Paul and his wife Cheryl have been married for 17 years and reside in Orkut. They have two teenage daughters, Devon and Dawn, and Dawn is a sophomore at the University of California at Berkeley, and Devon excels in academics and sports at St. Joseph High School. Paul, it's a pleasure to honor you today for 25 years of service. On behalf of the city council members and myself, we thank you for your service and congratulations.
Thank you. Well, I'm usually pretty good at making speeches, but this is a little bit formal, so I'll make it short and hopefully get through it. I'd like to thank the mayor, the city council, the citizens that have come here, number one, the department members that have come to show myself and fellow firefighters their support, and I'd like to thank my family, Cheryl and Devon, who have made it, and Dawn's up at Berkeley. I'd like to say this has been the best job ever. The day that I was told that I was going to be a Santa Barbara City firefighter was the proudest day of my life, and I have never regretted it. I will make this short. One of the most important things that I have seen in my 25 years here is although our department has had sometimes differences with city councils, sometimes differences with staffing, and everything that can happen on a fire department, we have had differences at the station, we've had morale problems, we've had this hit us, we've had that hit us. But what I wanted to say, and hopefully we're on TV and somebody watches this, is to the community, I have never been amongst a group of people that leave all of that behind when the bell rings. And when that bell rings, at least for the 25 years I've been here, to a man and woman, everyone leaves that at the station door, and we go out and do our job. You have one of the number-one fire departments, I would say, in the nation, and one of the best ones easily in the state, and they will never, ever, ever let this community down only because that is what they have in their heart. They took this job because they care about people, and they will never, ever let them down. Now, having said that, I have a little ditty here I may read. This was whipped up rather quickly, but if you have a question about the punchline, feel free to ask any of the uniformed members or anyone that you know, and they will certainly fill you in on it. The time will come soon when I can't take the heat. I'll be too old and heavy for the captain's seat. It'll be time to retire from a great life of fire. No more kids to raise, no more kids to sire. I don't want to rot or sit on the pot, with no place to roam, just staying at home. No, I'd like some wealth and maybe good health. I'm away from the station on a permanent vacation. I'll have a good time, oh yes, I can, because for years I've been thinking and come up with this plan. I'm going to Disneyland. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
We've got to hire another poet if he retires. And our last one is-
The deadline for the poet laureate applications is on the 14th of February, if you want to be nominated for that.
Okay, our last one is Deborah Irene Southgate, who is, there you are. Come on up. And when we get done here, I want all of you to come up so we can have a group picture, okay? Debbie Southgate began her career with the city of Santa Barbara Fire Department on February 8, 1982. Did you look at these guys and wonder how that was? Anyway, we'll talk later. As an account clerk, Debbie worked in hourly positions with the Parking District and Water Department before her permanent appointment to the fire department. She is responsible for processing all requisitions for goods and services, paying all bills, and maintaining all of the department's finance records. Debbie's ability to speak both English and Spanish is an asset, as she is able to assist many more callers and visitors to the fire station. Debbie has long been recognized for her assistance in translating for fire investigators during witness and victim interviews, and she also has translated for fire public education presentations. Quite versatile, Debbie can take on a variety of duties, such as filling in as the department's receptionist during vacancies, illnesses, and vacations, and she accepted the responsibility for distributing office, custodial, and kitchen supplies to all the fire stations in 2001, when central stores stopped providing that service. Debbie also is the fire department's official, and this is probably the most important thing, official cookie baker. If there's an occasion or a holiday for the department to celebrate, Debbie always supplies the baked goods for everyone to enjoy. Debbie lives in Santa Barbara with her husband Alexandra Southgate, a city employee who works in the Water Department, and her son Brian, who works for the Parking Department. It's very good, city, city family. Debbie, on behalf of the city council, it's a pleasure to honor you today with 25 years of service. Thank you so much for all the, from all the council members.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor Bloom and council members. My coworkers, who were up before me, and Paul, you're totally cutting into my time there, I can't believe this is, this day has finally arrived. What an achievement, to be in one job for 25 years, and to be rewarded for it. Thank you for the recognition, I truly appreciate it. I would especially like to thank my fellow coworkers, managers, fire prevention members, public ed, OES, and most of all, our firefighters. They have been there for me through, whenever I needed them. If anyone should be awarded for years of service, it's these people for putting up with me. That goes for my wonderful husband and son as well. Thank you. I can't imagine having as much fun anywhere else as I have been working with the city of Santa Barbara Fire Department. It's nice to be in a place where you're truly appreciated. I look forward to new challenges and new directions now that we have a new leader in the house. So far, it hasn't been bad, but we soon shall see.
I think that means you're on notice.
Yeah, he heard. If we could have all of you come up from the fire department and just stand here, because I think John Allman would like to get a group picture. It's very wonderful, it's very rare that we honor this many people from one department at the same time, so must have been a good year for hiring. There you go. Just get a picture, John, can you?
That's for your 100th anniversary.
It was your 100th anniversary when you, oh, when you hired them, that's interesting. Good for you guys. Got to put the woman in the middle. Oh, there. There you go. That's good. Now you know what it feels like to be at film festival. Right there on the red carpet. Thank you so much for all of you. Also, Madam Mayor, we have another individual to honor here today for 25 years of service, and that's Francisco Tejada, who's a maintenance worker with Public Works. And Victor Garz is going to come up and say a few words about his service to the city. Okay, and here we go. I wondered what those green shirts were doing here. There we go. I'm going to give you this, well, I'll give you- Francisco, let me give you the pin, and thank you and congratulations for your 25 years of service. It's really wonderful. Victor, I'm going to let you take this.
Thank you. Frank, we're very honored to have you here today to recognize your 25 years of service to the city. Frank started off as an hourly worker in downtown parking, and then was hired as a permanent maintenance worker. Frank is one of our most valuable maintenance workers. He takes a lot of pride in the landscaping of our lots. If you haven't noticed lately, the lots look really great, and that's thanks to Frank. Frank's family is here, he's got, his mom is here and his three kids, and Frank is very active in his church. He works as a volunteer helping with catechism. He teaches over at the Catholic Church here in town, and he also administers communion to shut-ins, and it's a very, very noble, very worthwhile, Frank is very dedicated to his church. Frank, you exemplify all the great characteristics of the ideal parking maintenance worker. You give great customer service, and we're very pleased and proud to have you here and recognize you for your 25 years of service. Thanks, Frank.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Administrator, would you read the rest?
Yes, thank you very much. How much fun it was to honor so many people. It's wonderful to see people come to council and be so pleased with their job and service to the community, so lots of fun. Good way to start the meeting. Also, celebrating 25 years is Bernaby Guena, who's a sergeant at the Police Department, and then a couple upcomers for the fire department that are 20 years of service, Olga Herrera, who's a fire engineer, and also David Ward, who's a fire engineer. For 15 years, Theodore Bakurin, who's reservoir dam caretaker in Public Works, Carol Terry, who's a senior grounds maintenance worker in Parks and Recreation, Greg Metcalf, waterfront worker. And then for 10 years, George Estrella, who's our building official. Five years of service, Adam Nares, a planning technician in community development, and Susan Russell, an executive assistant at the library. And those individuals all receive their pins at the department.
Okay, thank you so much, and thanks for all of the workers that came to support your department, people. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor, item number 11 has been removed.
Okay, we remove item 11, I think, I'll call in in just a second after we get rid of all these. I have a number of people for public comment. Mr. Frisch, you want to come up? And then we'll-
Wait.
Yeah, just wait a second. You know, so many of the firefighters came and the parking enforcement people, it's really wonderful. And parking people, I mean, it's really nice to see such camaraderie.
And I think we've got to prepare ourselves, because we only have five years until Olga Herrera's 25-year, and we know that's going to be a big riotous party here.
Absolutely. Well, we haven't seen the party yet, these are, this is formality. Well, we haven't seen the party yet, these are- this is a formality. I know, that's what I was just- right, it's so wonderful. Okay, I think we did it enough. There you go. Peter Frisch, go ahead.
I don't mind being upstaged by them.
No, you're doing fine. Go ahead, Peter. We'll close the door in just a second.
Madam Mayor and members of, in this case, the Redevelopment Agency, on behalf of the Board of the Santa Barbara Center for the Performing Arts and the Granada Restoration Project, I would like to extend sincere thanks to the members of the Redevelopment Agency and city staff for your willingness to consider the off-cycle request for RDA funds. Previously, we had been given a March 1 deadline, 2007, from a major foundation to accomplish $41 million campaign funding goal. As you will see from the enclosed in these information packets that I will ask you to pass out, thank you, that foundation has moved our request from March to June, which now allows us to present our request during the regularly scheduled RDA review period. This communication unfortunately came to us too late, late Wednesday afternoon, and then Thursday for- so we could pull the item in time from the agenda. In the packets, you'll also find a fact sheet with some responses to certain misunderstandings and misinformation that seems to have circulated lately in certain quarters of the community. I hope you'll find this information informative and helpful. We haven't been able to make a presentation yet to you, and yet somehow we have a very strong response to that presentation, so I thought I would respond to the response to the non-presentation.
You have it made. Well, it's perfectly clear to us up here, right? Yeah, nobody was wondering what you just said. Very good.
Well, that's seven of us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Kenneth Locke, I don't see him. Maybe the firefighter took him away. Alex Wolf. Ah, and he'll be followed by Gary Linker, although Gary, I think you're with item six, which we're- okay, hello.
Hello, my name is Alex Wolf. I'm a Boy Scout with Troop 4, sponsored by Santa Barbara Christian School. I'm a Life Scout working on my Eagle Scout rank. For Eagle Scout rank, I have earned 30 merit badges and am working on the Last Required Badge. I must also plan and coordinate a community service project in order to achieve my goal, which is to reach the highest rank in scouting. The goal project I'm working on is a bicycle safety fair for elementary-age school children. Boy Scouts is celebrating their 100th anniversary this year. I've been active in Boy Scouting since the second grade. I'm now a sophomore at Dos Pueblos High School. Scouting is an important part of my life. I've attended summer camp for the past five years, Lost Valley in Orange County, Emerald Bay on Catalina Island, Camp Witsit in Los Angeles County, and our own Rancho La Grande for the past two years. Our troop is very active. We do camp out each month, rain or shine. In fact, my mom says, sitting right back there, that when we rain, if there's a 20% chance of rain, sure, or when we camp, then sure enough, it rains.
That's true.
This coming weekend, our troop, along with other members of the community, will be cleaning up the Arroyo Burro shooting range. Our troop members volunteer at the Unity Shop each year. At Thanksgiving, our troop also adopts a local family in need of assistance. Everybody pools their money to go and shop for a Thanksgiving dinner for them. Our troop works very hard to do things that benefit our community. Being a Boy Scout means a lot to me. I work hard in school and at home and always try to do my best. Thank you very much for letting me speak here today.
Thank you, and thank you for your community project in advance. I think that's very wonderful. And I've been known to attend Eagle Scout celebrations. If you want me to attend, just let me know when you get it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks. So Gary, we're going to put you on later. Michael Self will be the last speaker.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is Michael Self. I'm with Santa Barbara Safe Streets. I'm going to drop off invitations. I hope you've all gotten them to our workshop that's going to be this Friday at Mulligan's Cafe at the Community Golf Course. We'd like you to be our complimentary guests. The public is welcome to come. And growth and roadways are such a hot-button topic that we have several specialists, both in development and cycle safety. We're having a representative from the MTD who's going to be speaking, as poor Sherry was thrown from her horse last weekend. But we're going to have, we hope, a real good program with a lot of interaction. We promise all questions will get answered. Maybe not at the time if we run long, but we will be sure whoever you address the comments to will get back with you and answer your questions. So I'd like to drop off these, if you haven't gotten them in your boxes, and we just ask that you RSVP if you're able to come, because we've got limited seating, it looks like we're spilling outside right now, so thank you. Hope to see you there.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Committee Assignment Reports. Whoa, everybody wants to talk, okay. Mr. Barnwell, there's one off and on, yeah.
I don't want to steal anybody else's thunder. There was a bunch of things that happened. I'll kind of stick to special things that I did. There was- we had a Housing Policy Steering Committee meeting last week, and we talked about two pretty important issues for the community. One of them was the condo conversion ordinance and the inclusionary housing ordinance. Just as a precursor announcement, we're looking into expanding the number of required affordable units in the inclusionary housing ordinance. Both- we use the word affordable units as a capital A, small a thing, so we're talking about the middle- the workforce housing that's now required in the inclusionary ordinance. Upgrading- not upgrading, let me change that word. We have some- we have some language in our ordinance, specifically in our ordinance, the Santa Barbara ordinance, which prohibits the easy transition from an apartment building into a condo building. And the reason that that was originally adopted years ago was because the apartment units were relatively small, and we thought if they got converted condo units, we'd have relatively small condo units that would appeal to that market that could afford the smaller condo units. Due to primarily construction reasons that have to do with upgrading associated with earthquake, it is right now almost impossible to take an older building and simply convert it to condos. What you have to do is upgrade it to such a degree for earthquake standards that you basically have to knock it down. Some of those requirements are within our own municipal code, and there may be the ability for us to change our municipal code requirements and allow that conversion to happen. So that is another thing that we talked about. Insofar as the inclusionary housing ordinance, we discussed the idea that there may be two types of inclusionary ordinances. One is the type that we have now, which is in existence now, which provides affordable units to the wide world. And then maybe when you look at something like the Cottage Hospital-St. Francis Project, you realize that if you're allowing an employer to build units which are only to be sold to their employees, and they are not to be sold to the wide world, then you find yourself in a special subset of affordable, inclusionary affordable housing. And so we may have to flesh that out and create incentives for employers to be able to build units for their employees, said incentives being a little bit different than the kind that we have heretofore created under our inclusionary ordinance. It's really kind of, for somebody like myself who does this stuff a lot in private life, I find it rather exciting. So I look forward to that discussion. There were several other things that went on last week, but I'll leave my fellow council members to go ahead and elucidate on those. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Schneider.
Thank you. Two of the other things happened last week. Again, kudos to the Santa Barbara International Film Festival. I saw 10 movies. That was- I had little pockets of time, didn't get much sleep last week, but that's okay. It was a wide variety of film, everything from foreign film, Oscar-nominated films, to one of them, which was last Friday, a local documentary called Much Ado About W, and not about the person in the White House. It has to do with actually the art on State Street that happened last fall, and the Colin Gray piece. And two people put together a documentary within three months about art and public art, and what is it and what does it mean to people, and, you know, using that piece as an example about free speech and public art and what's appropriate, what's not appropriate. It's fascinating, and I hope it'll be shown again after the Film Fest is over. I highly recommend people watching it. Also want to commend the Downtown Organization and the Arts Commission and various galleries in town for their first First Thursday, which happened, obviously, Thursday night. And there was- I went to about five or so different galleries that evening. There was a great buzz in the air. People were really excited to be part of this event, which will happen every First Thursday of the month. Some months may have themes or others. This was just sort of the opening one. And I went into one gallery that just opened up, just across here, just across Delagara Street, and they had all these folks here who didn't realize there was a gallery there. I didn't know there was a gallery there. There was wine, there was hors d'oeuvres, there was music, and real fun. And so kudos to Downtown Organization. I hope this really thrives throughout the year. So those are my two things.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Williams.
Last week, I was in Washington, DC for two things. One was the National Prayer Gathering, which I bring up just because it was an incredible event where much reconciliation has occurred historically between Democratic and Republican leaders and between international leaders, particularly those in South America and the Middle East. It was very inclusive in its nature. Many Muslim and Jewish leaders were in attendance, and just a very interesting amendment. I'll pass out a little info on it for my fellow council members. And also, I went to the Partnership for- well, in DC, also did some lobbying on the city's behalf. All this trip was not to any cost to the taxpayer, by the way. We- I went on my own. But I tried to get some work done while I was there, lobbying on behalf of the city on our Lower Mission Creek project and the necessity for those funds to address both the potential flooding issues and the environmental concerns that we have on Mission Creek. And it seems that Senator Feinstein and Lois Caffs both know that this is a top priority for the city and are going to be working on it on our behalf. And Councilmember Schneider, who serves on the committee, and myself will be following up with the lobbyists and the city staff on the next steps. And I went to Atlanta after that for the Partnership for Working Families, which is a collection of community-based organizations that work on issues of economic development with high-wage jobs or at least mid-level jobs. And there was a decent amount of work on community benefits agreements, and I want to pass around a piece on that. If people are curious, it's a lot more readable than how thick it looks. Community benefits agreements are very interesting mechanisms. Essentially, it's a contract between stakeholders, a developer and the city. It's sort of used in addition to conditions of approval. The reason why sometimes it can be superior to conditions of approval is because it can be enforced by the stakeholders, not just by the city. So the city's not the only one with the burden with enforcing the terms of the agreement, but it can cover everything from environmental mitigation to living wage jobs to health and safety concerns. So I'll pass that around just so that folks can know a little bit more about that.
Okay, thank you. Welcome back. Mr. Horton.
Last Saturday night, the Community Action Commission had its annual award dinner up in Buellton, and the Community Action Commission does a lot of really wonderful work in the community with some of the people that are in most need. And our very own Mayor Bloom received an award as a CAC Hero for her work in the St. Vincent's Housing and with the needs of the elderly of our community for housing. So I think we should all congratulate Marty on that and be pleased about the award. It was a really nice ceremony. And then I just wanted to mention that last week also that the Police Department had their annual employee recognition ceremony, and it's really great to see the officers that have been serving our community receive the kind of recognition they need. Thank you.
Ms. Falcone.
Thank you. The recognition award by the Police Department for their folks was one of the best attended in a number of years. There were over 125, 30 people. I think many or most of us actually were there, and it was really heartfelt and great to see folks, you know, with all kinds of kids running around. And it was a great family affair, really, it really was. Just to let folks know that on Friday, I'll be leaving to attend the Board of Directors meeting for the League of California Cities in Berkeley, and that the work that we're going to be engaged in primarily is the beginnings of a draft on an eminent domain piece of legislation that is being drafted with the cooperation of the League of California Cities, the Legislature, both Houses, the Governor's Office, environmental groups, business groups, property rights groups, so that we can actually affect some meaningful eminent domain reform, so that we don't get additional initiatives placed on the ballot, whether they're homegrown or from sources outside, like we did last time, on the ballot. So that's really going to be very involved and difficult to do, but we're going to roll up our sleeves and have at it. The implementation of the transportation bonds that were passed, there were a number of bonds that were passed, but the transportation bonds are the ones that we're going to be focusing on, the implementation of those bonds and the equity with which jurisdictions, large and small, are going to be able to go after that money and make sure that we get projects here in our region and that local projects will be given as much emphasis as the larger sort of big dogs on the block. So that's one of the things the League is really focusing in on. And then, of course, there is the perennial affordable housing, housing issue, and the RENA allocations, the how that process is done, whether there needs to be reform, and how that reform is effectuated are the three main topics of our discussions, and it's going to be a very in-depth year of hard work, but those are our topics. So if anybody has anything they'd like me to carry with me to the board meeting, I'll be leaving on Friday and back over the weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. House.
Oh, Madam Mayor, just in direct in response to that, Councilmember Falcone, I do have the draft of a possible amendment to housing policies that Linda Krapp and I drafted last year that would- is an attempt to reform a little bit of the- a piece of the RENA process without eroding affordable housing. What it would do is allow cities to put higher inclusionary requirements on the rezoned land, or in some cases, TDR units, even if they're affordable, are not counted as RENA credits. And so it would specifically allow in state law TDR units and higher inclusionary as part of that. So I can give you that draft that we used, and maybe that's something that the League would be interested in.
I'd be happy to take that to the board and to the Executive Director. I know that there are a very- a myriad of different jurisdictional concerns, and ours may or may not be among those that are sort of the vast concerns of the jurisdictions in the state, but I'd be very interested to look at it, and I know it's something that we've been working on for a number of years up there, but the Legislature really is not particularly interested in amending their policies, but I'd be happy to look at it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. House.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let's see, last Wednesday, at least, I think Ms. Schneider and you and Mr. Barnwell and I bumped into each other at the Oak Park Bridge ribbon-cutting. And that was really something. That old bridge that we used to kind of climb across was built in 1905, I think, and just got replaced with one that was a wider span and flatter, and people can get across it without getting on their hands and knees and bumping into each other. And did I see you dancing across the bridge with the French festival folks? That was just fun.
Yeah, that was fun.
And I also just really did enjoy the Police Department's annual employee recognition dinner. I was surprised in mingling with the crowd at how many of- dinner. I was surprised in mingling with the crowd at how many of those families I know through the sewing world. It's kind of interesting to see. It's a small town. On Thursday evening, the American Institute of Architects, 2006 Santa Barbara, for the Santa Barbara Chapters Design Award entries and honors were up on display, and they'll remain on display for some time at Channing Peak Gallery. They had their reception there. The title of their theme is "Design Matters," which I certainly agree with. And the buzz and the conversation I think you'll find interesting in it was the city's commitment to the 2030 Challenge. And I think it was really good that we kind of got things kicked off that way here last week. On Friday, there was a meeting that Mr. Barnwell and the mayor and I attended. We met with Rich Kromholz, who's the Director of District Five Caltrans, Jim Kemp, the Director of our Santa Barbara County Association of Governments, and about 2,000 engineers, it seemed like. We were talking about the operational improvements for Highway 101 that will begin in construction probably within a couple of years, maybe even at the end of next year. We're looking at, they're right down to the end of getting the final approvals of the final drawings and getting ready to send these things out to contract. So for those who have been interested in that project, something's on the near horizon. We did meet with the intention of addressing issues having to do with the current design of the southbound on-ramp to the freeway and concerns about whether it meets our local standards or not. And our goal was to come up with some strategies on how that could be tweaked a little bit to make it work out. So I think that's where we are, and we're hopeful that that turns out. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And a very busy week, as you can tell. But last night I represented the city at a dinner out at the university and then afterwards a lecture by James Hansen, who is the head of Nassau Goddard Space Center. And he gave us a very interesting lecture about climate change. And it was fun to sit down at dinner with him with about a dozen people and really pick his brain a little bit about climate change. And he's happy with what we're doing here. I talked to him a little bit about the light blue line that people want to paint in Santa Barbara on their streets. And I know the public works so his ears go up a little bit, but that's okay. And where they want to paint it is where, if Greenland melts, where the ocean will rise to. And it's very important that people will, that people need to be aware so that they can start doing their planning a little bit better and doing, and controlling their greenhouse gases. But he's very interested. He will be speaking to Congress, and he decided that that was a good third point because he's trying to figure out how to get the word out to the public. And so we may be discussed at Congress by James Hansen, but it was a very good evening. And he had a standing room only. People had to be turned away. So I was really happy to see that out at the university, too. Very, very interested people, and they should be because it's really their generation that's going to have to fix what we've messed up. Okay, Mr. We have a short agenda today, you can tell. Mr. Williams and then Mr.?
Well, I was just going to comment that the timing of that was excellent. While I was in DC, they released the IPCC report.
That's right. There was talk about that.
Which finally says that there is a 99% likelihood that global climate change is being created by human inputs.
That's right.
So I thought that was very interesting. And everybody, even in Washington, is having to take notice of that report.
That's right. And the people in Congress are starting to look at the cities and saying, now what were you talking to me about the last few years? And trying to catch up. So I'm pleased that they're paying attention now.
I think you're ahead of your time, Madam Mayor.
It's good. Well, not just me, but the whole city is doing great things. Mr. Barnwell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was, Mr. Horton did not mention this. I wanted to leave it to him. But he has been kind of spearheading a group that met last week also that was trying to get some very high-speed internet connections to our homes and houses. And we call it, we kind of loosely call it the Telecommunications Subcommittee. And we met last week with Cox to discuss what some of the options are that may be available for us so that the City of Santa Barbara can offer to the wide world places for businesses from UCSB and other places to start up. I also wanted to add, if I may, Madam Mayor, with your indulgence, two other things.
Sure.
Ms. Schneider complimented the Film Festival, and of course, I know we all agree with that. But I just, and so many people put that thing together. It's impossible to list them all, and we are so indebted to them. But I just wanted to pick out Roger Durling as this like strangely unique and powerful personality that has revitalized that Film Festival. As we all know, it's in its like twenty-second or third or fourth year. And it was dead on arrival for 15 years. And Roger came with that like puckish, you know, elfish mannerism that he has. And he started in this slow way to bring big names and expand it to include, you know, foreign language and Hispanic youth and kids. And we just owe so much to that single individual. And as a student of history, which I'm sure many of us, in many respects, we all are, it's always fascinating to me to see how one individual person can have such a dramatic effect. And so I just wanted to say thank you to Roger and to his long enduring and deeply patient partner, Michael Sebaugh, who probably has an even different story to tell. And then because it affected me personally and my wife, who was a former reporter at the news press, I wanted to offer my sympathies to the writers who have recently lost their jobs at the news press. It is a terribly disruptive and traumatic thing to have happen, and many lives will be affected by it. The paper is, or it has in its history been a great paper because of its writers. And it is a sad day to have the paper lose that blood that had made it so great. And I just wanted to offer on a personal level my sympathies to those writers because now they're out on the streets, and that's a tough thing to be. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I'm sure you're referring to the last six who just lost their jobs in the last 24 hours. Okay, thank you. Consent calendar. You have two to read, Laurie, by title only.
Item number five, resolution reaffirming support for acquiring the National Guard Armory, recommending that council adopt, by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara reaffirming support of the Park and Recreation Community Foundation's efforts to acquire the National Guard Armory for conversion to community uses. Item number six, amendments to RV parking restrictions, addition of exemption for RV parking in M1 and CM zones, and city parking lots for inclusion in the Safe Parking Program, recommending that council adopt, by reading of title only, in ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, amending Section 10.44.200 with respect to RV and other large vehicle parking, and Chapter 28.87 of the Santa Barbara Municipal Code with respect to the use of recreational vehicles as temporary overnight accommodations upon certain designated zones.
Okay, without, that was reading by title only. Without objection, we'll waive further reading. I would like to take item six off, the one that was just read. Anybody want to take anything else off? Okay. That was just read. It's about RV parking restrictions. I just wanted to, this is an ordinance, and it does not specify who will be running the program. It doesn't specify which churches or which nonprofits or which city lots. And so I will support this. But I just wanted to, we've had some recent complaints and so on about, especially about the Correo commuter lot. And I just wanted to, this calls for a resolution to come back and for us to identify the lots and identify the number spots. So I just wanted to make sure that the city staff works on the problems and the issues out there. Ms. Kent, I think you had a meeting today or something?
Yes, it came to our attention, Madam Mayor, members of the council, that there are some issues that are being put forward about possibly, in particular, the Correo commuter lot and about enforcement of regulations related to that lot. And so hearing that, we quickly put together a meeting yesterday of city staffers to really identify what are the issues in the lot? Are there any monitoring issues? Are there any enforcement issues that we need to be tuned into? We've had some issues brought to our attention. We met again this morning with new beginnings to talk about the history of issues. You know, are there issues that were brought up possibly in the past that now have been addressed? So that we're working out a really very detailed understanding of what is going on in the Correo lot and what will be going on in the Correo lot so that we can really clearly bring to you any issues that there are or that remain and how they will be addressed.
Okay. Okay. We have a speaker step from Gary Linker, Dr. Gary Linker. Did you want? Let's see, there. Make sure this is on. From new beginnings.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, I'm happy to be here today as a resource to you as this discussion proceeds. This morning's meeting was very productive. We continue to work very successfully with staff, try to address complaints that had been addressed by a neighbor up the road from the Correo Castillo lot and work with her in that capacity. There's been an exchange of emails between myself and her, which I've CC'd to you, Madam Mayor, and to Mr. Horton. And I'm here to answer any questions and try to maintain a clarity of our discussion.
Okay, thank you. I didn't, yeah, I didn't especially need the discussion right now, but I did want to make sure that these issues are addressed before we have the resolution come before us. That's all. Mr. House?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'm glad you took this off the agenda, but just, I am going to support this today. And I wanted to let you know, as you heard me last time we talked about this, I had a concern about one of the provisions in here. I've since spoken with the staff and have a better understanding of the program and understand that if somebody were to be enrolled in the program that we've been talking about, that they would not be required to leave their RV after a certain period of time. I was misunderstood, I misunderstood that provision, and so I can support this. It leaves somebody the opportunity to continue as long as things are copacetic and working out fine. So this will have my support today.
Okay. Ms. Falcone?
Well, yes, thank you. I am also glad that you brought this off because some of the concerns and I would, I would like to have the benefit of the understanding of what, what these communications have been. So if you could, you know, maybe let the rest of us know what they are, too. And the conversations that the staff has had with all the various parties and how that, how that has worked out. I shared with Mr. Olson yesterday some of my concerns, and hopefully those were talked about and taken into consideration. I am not quite sure that, I mean, I'm in favor of this as it stands today, partly because it does not go into which lots and how many and all of that where. But I think this valid conversation has been had. I also would like to be able to hear from the department at the appropriate time what, what that experience has been like and so forth. Because, you know, this, this has worked because there has been a structure in place, and there has been monitoring, and there's been a program. There have been permits that have been respected, and the program has been respected. And to allow that news to slip too much and let the controls go, I share Madam Mayor's concern about returning to the days of the past where she and I and Roger both all remember the difficulties engaged in trying to get our arms around, you know, this, this very sensitive issue. And we have a great program. We have a great structure. We've worked long and hard at creating it. And I do not want to see, out of the goodness of people's hearts, the program be compromised. So I look forward to the following conversation. I have some reservations, which are all known, and I look forward to it. I will be supporting this today, particularly the M1 CM legalization of an arrangement between a landowner and vehicle dweller. I believe that is something that I want to see go forward today, one per property and a consensual arrangement. So for that, I'll be supportive. But it's, it's with distinct reservations on a number of specific points.
Okay. Mr. Horton?
I just wanted to say that I, I think we have to use a little bit of reason and calmness when we, when we talk about these issues. The issue is certainly a Santa Barbara issue, but it's also an issue that faces the entire country right now and indeed some parts of the world. People can't afford the kind of housing that people should have. There's people living on the streets and living in vehicles that that's not the best thing for them. But unfortunately, the way the economy works right now is that there's more and more people falling off the bottom end of it. And that's just a fact of life. And I also recognize that the program that we have strives for perfection, but doesn't always reach perfection. There are hundreds, if not thousands, of people on the road in California, any one given day, driving around. And it's possible that somebody shows up at one of our lots and winds up there overnight that didn't have a sticker. And these things do happen. And I, I just don't think that we should necessarily think that that pulls down the entire program. I think it's just a fact of life in this part of this century. And I hope that we can resolve these problems in the next decade or so.
Okay. Mr. Williams?
I also want to let people know that residents of RVs or people who live in their vehicles aren't necessarily transient. Many of them are Santa Barbs. I myself lived out of my vehicle for six months and was one of the only reasons why I was able to survive in this town when I was 17 years old and on my own for the first time. My father also has done it midway in life. And if there was not, you know, I tell this to people, Santa Barbs often have to get very creative to survive because of the costs of living here. And not that this is the best solution. It's a pretty lonely existence. I can tell you from experience. But we have to know that, and be understanding of the fact that it is difficult to live and thrive in this community. And this is one of the ways that people are able to do that, hopefully on a temporary basis.
Okay. Ms. Schneider?
Thank you, and thank you to the rest of the council for the support of the ordinance. I think we all agree that ideally, we wouldn't need an ordinance like this because there would never be a person who would have to be living in a vehicle to begin with, and everyone can have the shelter that they need. Reality is here as well as everywhere else in the country. That is not the case. And I think we're doing something very bold in terms of facing the issue head-on as opposed to putting our heads in the sand. And yes, there are challenges to that. Yes, there are some monitoring and enforcement issues that need to be communicated directly and efficiently. And when problems come up, a way to address those problems. And I think we're doing that to the best of our abilities. And this is one step in that direction. So I, you know, obviously fully supportive of the ordinance, as I've stated before. And again, let's, you know, hope for the day that we can work on a system, not just here, but nationwide, where this is no longer an issue we even need on the books.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Barnwell.
You're right, Madam Mayor. With a, with a short agenda, we wax philosophical here. I just saw a movie about a week ago where, you know, it's got all these Hollywood stars, and it's, it was done in the late 30s. And it's about how there's this segment of our society during the Depression that lived outside. You know, they lived in little cardboard shacks or something like that. And of course, as everyone knows, you know, the gypsies lived in wagons for thousands of years. So it makes you wonder when you look at the bell curve of where do people live and where have they always lived since the beginning of time? It does include these, these components that are somewhat, I guess we'd say, the fringe. And I think Mr. Horton is correct that at any given day, someone might pull into the parking lot and sleep in the back of their seat near their car and not really even know there was any organized program going on. And, you know, Mr. Williams refers to the now legendary six months in which he lived in his automobile. But I, I've never mentioned it before, but I attended an entire semester at Davis, and I slept in a camper parked at the street right across from the gymnasium at Davis. And I showered in the gym, and I, nobody ever came up to me and said I couldn't do it. I mean, there's a large number of people that take advantage of a variety of different ways to get through the night. And I think Ms. Schneider is correct. We're trying to make it better, but sometimes it isn't better. I just think the program's a good one. And we don't seem to have abused it. I know the mayor, I share the mayor's concern. We don't want 400 people or 600 people. But there is a, there is a, you know, we are, you are your brother's keeper component to this thing. And so I want to thank the staff for all the work they've done. And the police department is in the, you know, the trenches on this thing all the time. is in the, in the, you know, the trenches on this thing all the time, and they deserve an awful lot of kudos, too, but I look forward to implementing it, and, and I thank everybody for all the work that they've done. And I'd like to move the, the consent, this is, believe, this is a consent item.
Consent calendar?
Consent calendar.
Second.
Second, and, and if-
Including item six.
If Councilmember Barnwell and myself are any, you know, last another four years on the city council, I guess we'll probably be living out of our vehicles anyway.
Yeah, but we got a salary increase. It's still hard.
And thank you, Mr. Linker, for being here.
Yeah, thank you very much.
I'm the Linker.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for the consent calendar. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Ordinance committee, Ms. Falcone?
Thank you. The ordinance committee met today at noon at the Get Heart Room, and we discussed campaign finance and disclosure ordinance and the elements, the provisions for the City of Santa Barbara. A number of items came from the subcommittee that discussed a multi-pronged ordinance, and we have sort of dissected that, and we had one of the, one of the discussions at the Faulkner Gallery, all of the city council last week on whether or not to hold our own standalone election, and if so, what does that look like? Should it be polls or ballots? We have a working subcommittee of the ordinance, well, it's not a subcommittee, the ordinance committee, it's a, it's an ad hoc committee to discuss the video voter or mail, mail, media access component of a candidate running, and what that structure should look like, and they're working with Mr. Lopez. The ordinance committee will see that, but they're not quite ready to bring their recommendations yet. What we discussed today were the actual provisions of finance and disclosure regulations that would exceed state regulations in effect. And we decided to move forward with some, and with others, we decided that the state law adequately covers a vast majority of these provisions. So the ones that we're going to be continuing on with, the city attorney's office is going to draft a, a, an ordinance, and we will then discuss it probably in early March, and I'll report out again after that. Thank you.
Okay. It almost seems to me, and we'll talk about this, but it seems to me you've got the ordinance which you're working through, and it takes a lot, but the video voter part is, is not really going to be an ordinance at all. I don't understand why it would be, and I know you're not proposing that, so it seems to me that it's gone off to a committee, and maybe they should just come back to the full council instead of-
I, I think that they'll probably come back to the ordinance committee just because that's where you sent it, and we decided to have this subcommittee structure what they think it should look like. I mean, ultimately, it'll come to, if you don't want the, if, if the will of the council is that that particular component not come back to the ordinance committee, that it comes straight to council, at some point, I guess that needs to be agendized and discussed, and then we'll send it back up. But I'm not quite sure what the process of doing that is. At this point, the reg, the committee's recommendations would come to the ordinance committee for a brief discussion on, on what that structure looks like and access opportunities look like, and we would then send on the recommendations with our comments to the full council if you want to change that, short-circuit that process and have it come a different way than we can do that.
No, my only concern is just that it gets done on time, which I think you addressed today, you were asking.
Yeah.
Because you were concerned that it get done on time, because we have an election this year.
I know.
And we know that, and so, and so that's all.
We're not part of it, but it's a good thing.
Well, but it's still for the city, so.
I, I believe Mr. Lopez thinks that they're working through it, can come to us also in March, just maybe not at the same time these other components come to us, but I, I'm sure that we could make arrangements for it to bypass the ordinance committee in, in the interest of time.
Yeah, it's just a timeliness. Okay.
I agree.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Item 12.
Item number 12, report on San Diego field trip and rail evolution.
Thank you. I'll have to look at that. Okay. Mr. Nisage?
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Tony Nisits, Public Works Director. With me today is Mr. Rob Dayton, our principal transportation planner, and Mr. Browning Allen, Browning Allen, our Transportation Division Manager. Today's item is, is a report on a couple of things. First, it's just kind of a, a little discussion about the council's rail subcommittee, which has been formed in the wake of the 101 in Motion consensus building process that SB CAG did, and as the, the council remembers, but maybe the, the people at home don't remember, that out of that process came a discussion that one of the things we needed to do was look at transportation regionally and multimodally, and we did in that process. And one of the things that I think the council believed wasn't going to be addressed, at least soon enough, was the rail component of that overall solution. So along those lines, the council formed a rail subcommittee. Mayor Bloom, Councilmembers Horton and Snyder were the, the original members of that subcommittee. At the December meeting, the, the council appointed Council, Councilmember House to replace the mayor. So they're moving along and, and having some meetings and discussing the issues, and I think really looking at the whole regional governance and early implementation of rail whenever possible. Along those lines, we've been gathering information for that subcommittee, and one of the things the committee decided to do was to go down and learn about some actual rail projects, and we kind of did that as part of the, the trip to the last California League of Cities annual meeting in San Diego. They was able to make some arrangements that, that we were able to do to, to look at two different solutions and maybe a third different solution that has some relevance to what we're thinking about here. So with that, we kind of turn it over to Rob, who'll kind of take us through what hopefully kind of lessons learned from those three field trips and some other dialogue that can come after that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Dayton.
Okay. Good. Mr. Dayton?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, good afternoon. Also, in addition to looking at, we'll find the Sprinter and the Coaster and the San Diego Trolley, Councilmember Schneider and Councilmember Grant and I both, all attended a-
Good House.
A, because, Councilmember House, excuse me, attended the Rail Evolution Conference in Chicago. And so we're going to be going over, in this presentation, we're going to be going over the three rail projects, but also we're going to be going over that conference as it relates to rail and other things. So in, as, as Mr. Nisits said, we went down to the league conference in San Diego, and so we decided to go on Amtrak, of course, and providing the, the means to get down to Oceanside, which was our first stop. Before we talk about those, those different rail projects, what is the difference between light and heavy rail is always a subject that comes up, and really, the difference is just what it implies, it is weight. But to go over the more not-so-subtle differences, heavy rail is generally a, is the Amtrak or MetroLink trains, they have diesel engines and generally on a dedicated corridor. They also tend to travel a lot faster than light rail, so heavy rail would be 65 to 85 miles per hour. They, they serve commuter traffic and also inner-city travel, and have fewer stops with longer distance. This is, the last slide was the, the MetroLink commuter rail service in Los Angeles. Light rail, on the other hand, is, has a dedicated, can be on a dedicated corridor or it can also run on the street, has a wide range of speeds. The photo of the light rail is in Baltimore. They have electric motors, which often makes the need for overhead wires or a cantenary system. This is the, the Pittsburgh Light Rail that's operating on-street. And then also, they have more frequent stops than a commuter rail or heavy rail, and light rail is, can do commuter traffic, both regional and local, but also has a high use with all-day type trips, both short and long distance. That's the commuter rail in San Diego, which will be seen later on the presentation. So when we did arrive in Oceanside, the first step was, the first stage of the trip was to look at the North County Transit District's issues, and, and we met with them and talked about a, a, a subject not so, not so far from, from our neck of the woods, in that they had a roadway, specifically State Route 78, which was highly congested, same, about the same distance as ours, 22 miles, severe congestion. Found that it was infeasible to widen, economic reasons, political reasons. They did an alternative study, much like 101 in Motion, and in the alternative studies, recognized some opportunities for rail. And then also in conjunction with the prop, their, their Proposition A, half-cent sales tax was passed. What was born out of that was the Sprinter, which is not yet completed. You can see the line there parallels the freeway, 78. It is existing line that they purchased, which became instrumental in the construction of the stations and eventually the operation of the Sprinter. Fifteen stations, the estimated cost at this point is $20 million a mile. It is a light rail service. What was unique about our trip is that the cars had just been delivered through Point, Port Juanimi and trucked down to Oceanside and then to Escondido, and here's what they look like. They're specially made by a German company. They are a two-section light rail vehicle, they're diesel engines, which is unique for light rail. In other words, it's self-propelled, they don't have the overhead cantenary system. Low floors with two tiers, so you enter in the middle of the vehicle and then step up to the sides of it, has a capacity of 450 standing, and then high cost, which we'll talk about in, in a bit. The lessons learned, here's a, here's a, a picture of us looking at the, going out, we drove out to, on a Breezer bus, which is their, their bus service, to look at the vehicles out at Escondido at the end of the branch line. The, the purchase of the line was instrumental in terms of lessons learned for them. The, having the, the road widening untenable was also a very interesting lesson is learned. The federal dollars, interestingly enough, were a blessing and a curse. They were a blessing because they couldn't have completed the project without them, they leveraged their half-cent sales dollars for the federal dollars, but they've become a curse because anytime they wanted to change the project because of the way the community was evolving, it became very difficult because they had to run it back to the federal process. Transit connections was a very important lesson that they thought we should hear, and that we need to connect all our buses and all our transit vehicles need to be connected very well. And then finally, that last picture was the facility, their facility, maintenance facility for the vehicle. The, the last lessons learned off the shelf, the vehicle that they chose, they had a long list of specifications for, and therefore, the cost of that vehicle was significantly higher than you might find in other, at other facilities. And this was the highlight smile of the trip, Councilmember Horton sitting in the cockpit of the Sprinter vehicle.
He wouldn't leave the seat.
It was a ve-
You gotta get a copy of that picture.
Mr. Allen says he didn't touch anything. I don't believe it.
I tweeted the horn though.
So the next issue we looked at was for, and specifically to North County Transit District as well, was the congestion on Interstate 5, which was probably not unusual to many folks. This is specifically the congestion between Oceanside and San Diego that they were experiencing. The I-5 corridor has a program of projects which include widening and transportation demand management solutions, and then all of, in addition to that, a commuter rail solution. This was also funded out of a half-cent sales tax, Proposition A, and then, and then that, sales tax, interestingly enough, is a third highway with third roads and third transit. So the coaster line, which parallels the 5, they purchased the, the rail line again, so they were, had a, a good operating cost at first because they didn't need to pay for the use of the line. This is a heavy rail solution, eight stops. Cost per mile is hard to judge on this particular service because of its evolution, but the fare box ratio is 37%, which is very good. And then also, just to look at, it ties in with the Sprinter line there in Oceanside, so eventually when the Sprinter line's running, you can get right onto the coaster. The coaster line is a commuter rail service, the same as MetroLink, the cars are in fact identical except for the paint, to Oceanside, Oceanside to San Diego, strong connection with their bus service, and eventually the Sprinter. Has eight, eight stations and 6,000 weekday boardings currently, 22 weekday, weekday trips, eight Saturday trips, four fare zones, really easy to, 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 to know how to pay for it, and then a round trip, just so you kind of know, from Oceanside to San Diego and back is $11. Who rides the coaster? This, these are very interesting statistics. Eighty-two percent of them are commuters, 70% earn $50,000 or more, 75, 73% ride five days a week, median age 43. Interesting, the average vehicle available per household is still two, these are, these are people not unlike us, and then 81% have a car to make the same trip that they made using the coaster. So we're talking about the choice riders in terms of transit use. Average trip length is 28 miles, a long way. So the lessons learned for NCTD was that owning the right-of-way, interesting here, again, a blessing and a curse, really great for the upstart, but now they're finding that those bridges that are on the line are extremely expensive to maintain and replace. They also had a lot of challenges, even though they were a big bus company, it was, it was hard for them to, to do a rail. There were a lot of budget, budget challenges, budget challenges that they warned us about. They, they warned us to plan early for a maintenance facility, something you're not necessarily thinking about, but it has, takes space, and theirs was late coming. They had unexpected growth, 70% growth in three years.
Wow.
No one could have thought that that would have happened, but they warned us to plan for our success. And then account for vehicle maintenance replacement. Currently, and all the costs that they, they've had up until this point, haven't accounted for the need to replace and refurbish the vehicles, so lessons learned. And here we are pulling into the Santa Fe Station. Interesting here, you see Amtrak on the left, coaster in the middle, and then there is the San Diego Trolley, right there, all of them together. Some background on the San Diego Trolley, they started, not unlike us, with a mule cart. Ours went down State Street, theirs went down Broadway in 1886, and then the first trolley car in 1887. Interesting, those people don't recognize that the trolley car was the beginning of sprawl. They were purchased by landowners that had developments outside the urban core, and this was the way to coax people to, to live out of town, so to speak. But this was the first of their, their electric vehicles, and then through 60 years, to 1947, 1948, they were beginning to be replaced with bus lines, and then their, then the parade of the General Motors buses down Broadway, signifying the end to the electric railway. How interesting that it's back, and in 1981, because their roots in rail and their success there, really, I, was a story told of a bidder that, sorry that we left it, and now we're back. So now what they have in San Diego is, they, they also purchased their rail line, 108 miles in 1977, and started with the famous blue line that goes from San, downtown San Diego to the border of Mexico. They have a total of 51 miles in service, three routes, the green, orange, and the blue line, 53 stations. Half-cent sales tax funds this. Interesting that the, the light rail was started before the half-cent sales tax in this, in this case. So San Diego Trolley vehicle, it's a, it's a light rail, electric vehicle. It's off the shelf. The vehicle you're looking at there is the first one they bought in 19, in the late 1970s, and the, they had a one-page specification that the, that it be read, and, and because of that minimal specifications, it was a very economical vehicle to buy for the time. And then there's three models, this is their second model on the right that you see there that they've purchased over time, and it, each one of those cars holds 150 people, that's what the inside of the cars look like. You'll notice that there, that the first two versions of the, of the cars they have in the system, there, I don't know if you see, there's a, there's stairs, and you actually climb stairs, so they don't have the low floors that some other transit vehicles have. They, they have 30 million riders a year, 110,000 average weekday riders. This is their latest vehicle, which does have the low floors, and it have the two-tier system. You can see the interior is, is much more oriented towards trips that are coming and going with a lot of standing room next to the doors and the seating away from the doors. What, who rides the San Diego Trolley? Well, it's, it's commuters for regional and local, and then also non-work trips. All day long, you'll have trip, the trolley servicing trips, school trips, all sorts of trips that people would take, so not just for commuters. And then it also, it has dedicated lines, and it also runs right on the street, so quite a bit of variation with the trolley. Lessons we learned from them, they said, definitely connect the dots, be careful where you put your stations, that they're places people want to go to, and, and that was important for them. Don't over-design, figure out what the, the baseline train, the baseline station is, and do that, stick to it, don't be coaxed into any frills, avoid federal dollars if possible. They actually avoided federal dollars until their last extension, and the reason for that was just for the lesson we learned back from the North County Transit, is that they were more flexible in changing their project as the community, because, because these projects evolved over a decade, you have to be, be willing to change the project as the community so desires, which lends itself to the fourth lessons learned, community buying is key to the success of the San Diego Trolley. the San Diego Trolley. So, that leads us to Chicago and the Rail Evolution Conference. Just some background before we get into the conference, just on what their light rail system is much different than the other ones we've seen, in that it's elevated. You may remember The Sting or movies like The Fugitive, seeing the light rail in Chicago. It's elevated up high, above the street. What's interesting about the rail is it never left the city. This is one of the cities that never got rid of rail. In fact, you look at the station downtown, that's the original station. You could tell people were a lot shorter when it was built. Some of the headrooms are only seven and a half feet. It's unbelievable to walk through. You see the wooden planks. It's very much the way it was then. It's powered by a third rail. You notice it's a light rail, electric vehicle, but no overhead lines, that's because it's powered by a third rail down here, which to avoid public electrocution has to be grade separated, so that can only happen in a grade-separated system. They are to the point now where during the peak hours, they'll have a train every two minutes. So, now they're limited by, and they can't get a train any more frequent than that, so now they're limited by how many trains they can tack on. And so, some of these, you'll see on the right, you can kind of make out, there's a new platform going in to make the longer platform so they can add more trains. Rail Evolution, what's their name and why Rail Evolution? Congressman Earl Blumenauer tells us, as he's the third district representative from Oregon, tells us that it was all about, "So, you want a revolution? It's the Beatles song." But what we really found out is that Rail Evolution is much more than rail. And it was a very important lesson, because you hear that conference name, and you think, "Oh, this is just about rail," but it was actually much deeper. Their mission statement is to create a national movement to develop livable communities with transit. Well, what are livable communities? They are those that are healthy and economically vibrant, socially equitable, and environmentally sustainable. And just to go over just one facet of the program, because there were many, consider the question, what is our transportation problem? Well, you know, most people would say, "Well, it's traffic congestion, it's road construction, it's parking congestion, or the cost of parking, government maintenance." We're dealing with that right now in our Measure D discussions. We've got this big-ticket cost to maintain our roads, it's traffic safety. But more than that, it's also the lack of mobility for non-drivers with an aging population. If people can't drive, what do they do? It's the environmental consequences of the transportation we implement, and then also it's a physical activity issue. There's many other issues related to transportation. So, the first point is, what is the problem? It seems on the surface it's transportation, but it runs much deeper than that. And what they pointed out in the current planning, it tends to be reductionist. In other words, it's simplifying. Each problem is assigned to a single agency with narrowly-defined responsibilities. So, the transportation agency would deal with congestion, local agencies with parking challenges, environmental agencies with pollution, health, public health agencies deal with community fitness. So, it's kind of decentralized. And so, under this decision-making process and reductionist decision-making, they pointed out that public agencies implement solutions that are, to one problem, that may actually exacerbate a problem in a different area. And there's a tendency to undervalue strategies that have, provide multiple solutions or modest benefit in a number of areas. And so, they pointed out the holistic planning or the sustainable planning, which emphasize integrated nature of human activities and therefore the need to coordinate planning among different sectors and jurisdictions and groups. And so, sustainable planning is to develop what preventative maintenance would be preventative medicine is to health. So, it anticipates or manages a problem versus waiting till there is a crisis and now we're solving the crisis. So, put another way, more comprehensive planning is a win-win strategy, solutions to one problem that help solve many other problems in our city or society. So, one of the questions that they would commonly ask is, you know, which congestion-reduction strategy also reduces parking costs, saves consumers money, and improves mobility options for non-drivers? So, what solution would cover many facets of a problem? And I think that that's why what they're saying, the transit-oriented becomes the Rail Evolution banner, because the transit addresses many of these. It not only addresses congestion and reduces that, but it increases mobility. And one of the statistics I was very interested in is that with a heavily-transit-oriented population, walking and bicycling also increases because those modes are more important in a transit-oriented city. Socially, with an aging population, transit becomes more important, economically more vibrant. It's an environmental solution, and also keeping us walking, we walk more, our health is better, so it's a health solution, and also uses the existing infrastructure more efficiently. One of the interesting things that they were kind of rebuffing is that motorists should really be all for this because it's all about reducing traffic congestion and improving safety, and then other burdens like chauffeuring folks around town. And then it's often the quickest and most efficient way to improve congestion in the city. Our Santa Barbara really, our successes really emulate what was said at Rail Evolution. It was very apparent to us in that we have the circulation element, which is kind of born out of the striving to live within our resources banner, and it has this balanced approach, and it already emphasizes the relationship between transportation and land use. That's why we have a land-use chapter, the circulation element. So, really affirmed what we're already doing. And then it really already affirmed also MTD. We just have this amazingly-successful transit system, which is nationally-recognized as a small transit system that has the same availability or use as a large city. So, I just have one statistic out of many up there, the passenger miles per capita, MTD, 136, versus the average in American cities that are 2,000 to 200,000 to a million people, only have 36 passenger miles per capita. So, MTD is remarkable in that way. We're doing it right. And then also, just reflecting on the 2030 Challenge last week that was passed, and how green building is also a very important facet that we learned about at the Revolution Conference, and how that can tie into thinking globally and acting locally. So, if I could attempt to even summarize all that and how to tie it together, I take away that good transportation solutions involve community. I think that that's probably something that we already know a great deal about in Santa Barbara. Holistic transportation solutions will probably be challenging to discuss for us because we have that segmented planning field right now. And then transit-oriented transportation offers a broad range of modest solutions to many current city issues. And I think we already know this, that the transit, the deep-rooted transit that we have in Santa Barbara is already addressing many of the issues and can only get better as we enhance it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Schneider, do you want to...
Sure, I'll...
Oh, you start, but we... Ms. Schneider and Mr. House were the ones that went to this.
Yeah, we all went to... Well, I'll just, first off, to thank you, Mr. Dayton, for an excellent report. I know you put a lot of work into that and have, there's lots more pictures in his little pixel, in his SIM card, I think, or whatever it's called, in your camera, for both trips. But I think it just goes to show how important it is that we stay involved not only with transit issues, but long-term planning, how it deals with our general plan update coming up, what happens with Measure D and the reauthorization of that since that failed last year, and what can we do to make sure that something the voters will approve is something that still represents what we hold dear, which is about that connection between housing and transportation and alternative transportation, as well as road repair, which is a big piece, for me, anyway. I always found, I found it interesting in San Diego, the 28 miles between, in the Coaster Line, and how similar that is between Ventura and Santa Barbara. So, you know, if it can be done there, certainly we still need to figure out how it could be done here, and I think there are opportunities for that. And that connection between the buses and the shuttles to the rail, that to keep, you know, so you get to your final destination as easily as possible. Rail Evolution in Chicago was an eye-opener. This is my second time going to the Rail Evolution Conference. The first one was in Salt Lake City, and it's not, as Rob mentioned, not just about transit, it's about the holistic approach, that you can't just talk about housing and transportation. You talk about how that leads to open space, how it leads to green building design, how it leads to reduction of energy admissions. I mean, all the things we've been talking about the last several weeks, whether it's our own 980 workforce, you know, system, or telecommuting, the 2030 Challenge that just came up. There are so many things interactive here that we have to stop thinking, okay, this is about housing, and this is about cars, and this is about rail. It's all interconnected, and that was the big piece for me. Grant and I, Councilmember House and I also went on a field trip our last day in Chicago to witness a number of green roofs in a platinum lead building that used to be in a brownfield, and seeing that conversion from a brownfield to a platinum lead building, and how solar panels are used, both functionally and aesthetically in a building, was, you know, so there's lots of notes we have, and I know mine was in the agenda packet. I think Mr. House just passed his out for everyone. And I really think, I mean, we can certainly talk about things up here, but really the bulk of the work in terms of the general plan update and how it relates is going to go back to our commissions. And I know Rob put a lot of work into this presentation. I would suggest that at least the TCC Committee and perhaps the Planning Commission get this dog and pony show, or whatever it is, just to have a discussion in how the circulation element folds into this, because it's going to be more and more part of a big discussion as we get into our general plan update. So, if it's okay with the rest of the council, I'd like to direct staff to have them, just as a discussion item. I think it worked well on the other issue with homelessness in the tenure plan, when we had a discussion item at the Planning Commission and the Human Services Committee. Everyone there appreciated just having that information. It helped them with their future, with their future decision-making as projects would move forward. So, you know, this is just the tip of the iceberg, but I'm glad we were able to spend some time today and talk about really crucial issues that shape Santa Barbara. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. House?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you very much. And I really want to thank Mr. Dayton for his presentation today. It was really, really wonderful having you along on the trip. The conversations that we had, we're putting these things together and trying to make them be relevant, you know, understand the relevance to Santa Barbara, and not have it just be a trip far away, and then we come back having had an enjoyable experience, but have it come back and be useful here. It was very, very important. So, one of the things that seemed to echo for me in almost every presentation was this kind of a process orientation, meaning that public participation at the earliest possible phase of visioning and of creating some idea of where we might go, what the needs, the concerns are, those kinds of things, that that is absolutely essential, something we do very well in Santa Barbara. So, it was very validating, but it came up over and over again. The disaster stories were always of having not reached out, of having gone ahead with some great idea and then found out later that it really didn't address the problem, things like that. On the other hand, the success stories seem invariably to be about how champions for the new way of thinking about their community had risen right out of the community itself, how leadership was very helpful, but only because the community had stepped up. And I think that's critical. One person made this really interesting remark, "Work from people's vision, but remember, vision without implementation is just a hallucination." And I think that was really very helpful to me to realize, you really need to think it all the way through. The early investment in public process was a top message, demonstrating the benefits. I think sometimes we can get out in front of ourselves, we'll have solutions that are in search of a problem. I mean, it seems that way sometimes when we come up with our good idea that we, you know, maybe bring back. But we're fortunate in that lots of other communities around the world, but certainly in the United States, are wrestling with the very same issues that we're struggling with, the very same difficulties, the adjoining neighborhoods around a commercial strip, the, you know, the issues and the questions about, well, what does density actually mean, you know, and how do you deal with the increasing population needs and do it in the most efficient way possible? And can you integrate all this green stuff we've been talking about? And I'm here to say, we saw example after example after example of where these things are being dealt with in just really remarkable ways. There's the, one person told the story, and it's not a made-up one, it's really true, of this poor 78-year-old woman who started across the street and couldn't get across in time and got a ticket for taking too long to get across the intersection, you know? And, you know, it's sort of counterproductive when you think about it. If you look at this holistic approach that Mr. Dayton's talking about, I mean, for us seniors, as we get older, you know, we're going to want to walk around and get, stay healthy, and we don't want to get in the way of that. So, to that point about walking, it was made over and over again that every trip begins with walking and ends with walking. Very, very much encouragement to pay attention to what they call the last mile, to make sure that the walking experience is one that really is encouraging of walking. And then, lastly, I just want to say, some of these questions that really get you started in a process like this are ones like we've been asking in the Outer State Street conversation, but we will certainly be doing in Santa Barbara 2030. Questions like, where do you like to go? Where do you take your family? What do you do with visitors? And where does all your money go? I mean, it's just kind of simple, basic questions that kind of get you in there, you know? Yeah, good question. But they, and they really begin to have people get involved and try to look for some really good solutions. I've handed out notes for the council and for staff, they're available for anyone else who'd like to have a little bit of the experience of what it was like to be there and to learn from some of the people that spoke to us. I think some recommendations can come out of this. Ms. Schneider put some in her report. We have a little bit of a schism here in Santa Barbara in that we have our Transportation Circulation Committee, which is really focusing on transportation and the implementation of our transportation circulation element of our general plan. And the Planning Commission seems to be really great at land use stuff. And I think I share a concern, and I have one anyway, that we could, we could make a mistake if we get that line too bright between those two things. We really need to keep integrated on this stuff. And so, that means our housing conversations and all these land use issues and stuff, they really have to take into consideration transportation, mobility, access, all the rest of it. Anyway, I really appreciated the opportunity to go there, and, oh my gosh, how do you bring it back? Oh, you know what it's like? It's like when somebody goes around the world on a great big trip and they bring you back to a thousand slides and they ask you over, you know? It's kind of like that. So, we'll try not to do that to you.
Oh, thank you very much. No, I appreciate you reporting back so we can kind of share in what you're doing and what you've done. Mr. Horton?
A couple, three years ago, there was a committee called the Jobs Housing Steering Committee. That committee did a lot of real interesting research and had data, you know, I have a copy in my office. And one thing it pointed to, of course, was the jobs housing imbalance, which is a real issue for us. And another thing is, we have some geographic issues along the South Coast here that they don't have in the plain states and in the Illinois area. And all this, to me, points to the need for regional cooperation. Without regional cooperation, I mean, if you look at some of the plans that go down to the south of us, there's not much interest showing in what happens up this way. And yet, there's thousands of people on that freeway every day going back and forth, you know, 28 miles or 30 miles to the south. So, we just need to find a way of working with people on both sides of us, because that's the only way we're going to really get a good solution here.
Mr. Williams?
Well, I want to talk, maybe just say a couple, hopefully, attempts at being visionary and then, but concentrate on some of the next-step issues, which I think is important to talk about, especially in the wake of 1B. I mean, it's amazing, one of the things I realized from last week's trip is that Washington DC, when most of its mass transit system was built, had only twice the population that the South Coast has right now. Okay? And that's, you know, because we think of these places as just big cities, totally out of scale with what we have, but really, when you think about it, because our development is constrained on this small strip of coastal plain between the ocean and the mountains, that we have the potential to adequately serve our public with a fairly reasonably because of that constrained geography. And, I mean, I think that some of these examples are just amazing. I mean, I think that someday we should really be having a dedicated bus lane or trolley car or something like that that runs all along... car or something like that that runs all along from the waterfront to Outer Hollister. I mean, we have the potential because we have the space in upper state, you know? We'd only be able to have limited use of lower state, but those can become a part of an economic revitalization, not part of an economic shutdown. The, and I think commuter rail is one of those things that we need to talk a whole lot about. And more than talk about it, we have an opportunity, I think, in this year. Though Proposition 1B did not include any money specifically for commuter rail, it did for freight. And when I was last up in Sacramento, I talked with a member of the Lo Sand Board as I reported to the council. And he thinks that the Lo Sand Board is very amenable to requesting to the next higher up with it, which I think is the California Transportation Commission, funds for siding improvements. Because as, there's a very thoughtful man that has spoken with many of you from the Mesa, and he constantly says, well, you know, if you do this, you need much more sightings. And he's absolutely correct. And we need to really facilitate siding projects, and we have an opportunity this year. And I think it's, you know, on reviewing our legislative platform, I don't think we need a motion for it, but I think we should move on this early in the year, you know, consult with the Lo Sand Board and figure out what kind of request can be made and what our role is in pushing that forward. Tony's talked with me about it, and it's, the city staff does have their attention on it, but I think that it's one of the concrete next steps that we could make. And I didn't talk much about it, but Councilmember House, last time I talked about freeway expansion funds, said, hey, wait a minute, we need to talk about this, too. So he's very right about that. And we need to take the opportunity that we have this year with 1B funds and move it as far as we can.
Well, we also have our Assembly Member, who is the head of the Assembly Transportation Committee, I guess it's called. And he sits in on the Lo Sand Board.
Yes. And he, and I have discussed this on the city's behalf with him about this project, and he has promised support on this.
Yeah, so you're right, the timing is wonderful on this one. Mr. Barnwell and Ms. Falconi?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to thank Mr. Dayton for that good work. I always like having transportation conversations with Mr. Dayton because he's so perceptive. And it is an integrated approach to how we build a city. The metaphor has been much used, but it's like a growing organism. You know, when your child is growing, it isn't, it isn't just their eyes that become more acute, or their bones that become longer, or their muscles, but the entire thing is growing. And I think in putting together cities, which is kind of a phenomenon of the industrial revolution of building cities the way we're building them, because otherwise they were organic, the way that they grew. But we came to the conclusion, it seems, and again, much discussed in several books that I've been reading, we have to handle housing, well, we have to handle, build industries, face for industry. And in doing that, kind of piece by piece, instead of an integrated way, we now find ourselves after 100 or 150 years with this kind of hodgepodgey thing. Also, a very interesting book, the title of which has escaped me right now, that I was reading about the automobile. Most of the world-famous quote "trolley" systems, subways, et cetera, et cetera, were built when not everybody had a car back in the turn of the century. It was rare for an individual to have a car, but the necessity of getting around was there, so you had these great systems. Then we had this, I think, an aberration or a weird period where everybody got a car. And now, I have a feeling, based upon the global warming issues and the way that cities are now growing, we may find ourselves back to the idea where not everybody has a car, or if you do, you have one and you use it to go to Frisco or something like that. For me, I think the best way to get to where we want to be on the transportation issues is to raise the price of gas. If gas were to go to $6 a gallon, there'd be solutions popping up all over the place on how to get from Ventura to Santa Barbara. But I really enjoy those conversations myself, like you guys had at Rail Evolution. It was a real treat. I wanted to thank Mr. Dayton also and the entire Public Works that went with us, Mr. Nisic and others, and to the San Diego one, to get to drive on those little trolley cars. It's really inspiring. I don't know if we'll get there soon, but it's very inspiring, and I appreciate the good work of my council colleagues who work on this uniformly, tugging hard at that big, heavy rope to get it, drag that object to where we want to get it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. There, the discussion last night, the climate change lecture was about how do you, not force people, but how do you get them motivated to reduce the carbon? And they were talking about, which is being thrown around Congress, a carbon tax. So that would raise the cost of gasoline also, just like you were saying. Don't know if that'll happen, but the discussion is beginning, so that's a good comment. Ms. Falconi?
Just briefly, I know everyone wants to go home, but, you know, there was a philosophy at one point, I think Mr. Barnwell's point is really well-taken. There was a philosophy at one point, you know, Henry Ford said, you know, it's necessary that we build cars and other things that the common man, if you will, can access, that everybody's deserving. So there was that whole philosophy. And then there was a slogan, a national slogan, "Chicken in every pot and a car in every garage." And we don't often remember that. And I thank you, Mr. Dayton, and all concerned for all the good work, but also for not foisting upon us a thousand slides, I really do appreciate that. We didn't have to go through that. But I want to put in a plug for what is going to become known in some form or another as the son of Measure D. And the funding stream that we need to come up with to effectuate all of this connectivity, be it through road systems or rail systems. I noticed that in the reading material that you gave us, that their San Diego's Proposition A was passed by the voters in 1987. And their Oceanside or Sprinter is set to actually go online, in other words, begin to work in 2008. I don't know, that's 21 years at my calculation, and the same thing with the Coaster. So unless we want to be 21 years down the road, when none of us will be here, will be physically here, one can only hope, but we won't be sitting here for sure, well, then we need to get creative and create partnerships and willingness, particularly with Ventura, and to really think about the funding streams. MTD, we've talked about them actually within their district doing some sort of a mechanism that is unique to their funding and is a perpetual funding stream for them. Maybe we need to look at the district that we're planning on or we are visioning for this commuter rail system between Santa Barbara and Ventura. And I don't know if it's even feasible, I just throw it out there as a wild idea of maybe we develop a commuter rail district, but we need the cooperation, we need the sanctioning of a whole lot of, you know, bureaucratic entities. But the first step is to actually get a cooperative and imaginative and creative relationship going with the folks in our sphere of travel. And I don't, I throw that out there just to chew on and to think about, but we're going to have to start really thinking about how are we going to fund this? Because even with a dedicated funding stream in 1987, these things are still not up and running, and it's 2007. So that is a true and honest measure that people have to say, oh, we'd love to put commuter rail on the ground. Well, you know, as Mr. Barnwell said, these systems that have been around forever, and you said in Chicago, and I'm from New York, and, you know, these places have not ever gotten away from it because the moving of people was an organic sort of growth element of those cities. The West is a totally different kettle of fish, San Francisco being unique, and the red line down in Los Angeles that they had to go to the Sierras to get power for, but never mind. We need to start thinking about this. And once we have a dedicated funding stream, then we can really start accessing the state and federal monies. But I put it out to people to not be so myopic in your thinking about either streets and freeways, or rail, or bikes, or this, or that. It has to be, everything in this conversation is necessary in order to achieve, you know, those ultimate goals of clean earth and reducing global warming. So those are my comments. And thank you all for your work, and I'm glad you enjoyed Chicago. And they're always, you know, it's a short out there, if you ever met my husband, they're little people. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anything you want to add, Mr. Dayton? No? Okay, thank you. Thank you for going with us.
Just a little point to put into this. We did get to hear tremendous success stories. These ones that we just were talking about are only a few. The new road runner in Albuquerque, the music star in Nashville, these have been, these have started up and now are running successfully in a much shorter period of time than we're now talking. And even the example here of our section, if some of this 1B money could go to some of those sightings, which would benefit freight, it would be a direct benefit to our ability to do commuter rail, reduce the cost significantly. So I remain very optimistic, and I agree completely with you about the comprehensive view. Let's have Santa Barbara be a place to convene some of these players. We could do that over the coming months and a year or two, and see if we can get Ventura County to begin to talk with us a little bit more and strategize on how we could do this.
Right. No, I appreciate, you're saying that the cities that you are citing, like Albuquerque and Nashville, those are very successful cities, and they're doing a really good job. And that's how, part of the reason of their success has to do with their, the way they move people around their cities. The city, I always say that if Rocky Anderson, who is the mayor of Salt Lake City, if he can do it in Salt Lake City where they love their mule trains and all that stuff, then it can be done anywhere. And it's been done successfully in Salt Lake City, is a very successful city, too. Mr. Williams?
I also, one, on the meeting before I left town, I attended a council meeting in Ventura, my capacity down there, my work with cause and against Walmart. But one of the, one of the aspects of the Victoria Corridor Plan in Ventura should lead us to, oh, wait a minute, you know, this is pretty progressive, you know, maybe we aren't the center of the universe if we're not doing stuff better than Ventura is. They're embarking on a very ambitious plan on Victoria Corridor, which is probably the least pedestrian-friendly main avenue in the region that I can think of, anyway. And it's got about four lanes either direction. And it, their plan calls for taking each lane on the far left and the far right and making that into a sort of the local traffic turning lane separated from the main, you know, go fast through the thoroughfare parts of the street to make it more pedestrian-friendly, to make transit possible. And some of the partnerships we could have with Ventura is also just looking at what they're doing, what we can do. And on technology, Councilmember Schneider and myself are pushing forward with a request by MTD and VCTC to get smart bus technology for, you know, I don't like that word because it implies that maybe right now we have dumb buses, but that's not the case. It's putting GPS units in each bus so that, and a web interface, so that you as a user can look online, say, oh, that bus is five minutes away, I better go out to the street. That way you don't have to wait around for it. And it's also helpful for the providers, of course, because then they have the potential of actually adding buses if something's behind schedule or other things. So there's a lot of exciting stuff. So I'm going to bring in a copy of the 200-page Victoria Corridor Plan for our transportation planners to read in their spare time, if they don't mind, because it's, I think, a real possible success that's taking place to our cell.
It's sort of like 16th Street in Washington DC, where they have a thoroughfare and then they have the lane on the side, but a lot of people walking, which is probably what they're trying to get. And I've never seen a person walking on that street, so I hope they're successful. Anything else from anybody? Okay, then we're going to adjourn this meeting to Monday, February 12, 2007, at 1:30 for a site visit to 1575 La Vista del Oceano Drive. Thank you very much.